I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second, please?
One second.
Roll call.
Trustee Leiken.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Does any board member have a disclosure regarding any item on the agenda tonight?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay. Oh, just a note, please silence your cell phones. They always forget to do that, so. Okay, could the deputy clerks please read the open meeting compliance certification?
That's the guidelines for public...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The public will have opportunity to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Alternatively, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but it is typically accomplished through the raise hand feature. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York State law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on a given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communication to villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the sender's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Thank you. Okay. Let's start in here with department reports. First up, building inspector, please. You all have a copy of Steve's report. Did anybody have any questions regarding his report?
I just did have one follow-up question, actually, about an item that came up at the last meeting. Steve, did you have a chance to run the report of the fire inspections in the village? I think we had talked about...
I had given the mayor a copy of where I was at. I had said I was at two-thirds already on the report, so then I've been starting to do them now for the fall.
Okay, so at the last meeting, my understanding is that you were going to print out using the software system that we have to manage and record the fire inspections of buildings, that we would basically just get a printout of the commercial buildings in the village?
Why don't we just forward it to the board?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that, but I wrote this...
Yeah, let's just forward it to everybody. Yeah, because it's sort of a rolling inspections, is really what happened.
I told the mayor, we had a kind of intercall today, and I've spent the time now to go through every business and get a content number for every business in the village.
Yeah, because some things have changed.
I actually completed that today.
So that's great. We'll have an internal record, which is wonderful. Yeah. Any other questions for Steve? And I know we have down as item number five is the Village Hall roof, but I'd rather just talk about it now because you're here, about where we are with the roof and what is needed, because I know you've been speaking with roofers and also...
Jack and I, then I got up on the roof and took a look because we were noticing some bubbles, and it's progressively getting worse on the flat roof section of the building. It's a rolled roofing, granular rolled roofing, so I've taken to contacting different contractors. I've only had two so far that gave estimates to replace the flat roof area of the roof. It's 25 years old. There's very large bubbles in the roof and are cracking.
And it's compromising some of the seams you were saying earlier?
The seams are separating because the bubbles are so high.
Oh, okay. And then, how many... Because I haven't been up there, so how many seams are the other...
Thirty-five or forty seams.
Okay.
And I'd say at least 50% of them are, have bubbles now.
Okay.
If not more.
And then you also, I know you, there was a report that was done like 22 years ago by Bureau that had done a whole assessment over the building, and so you were able to reach out, I think, to somebody there?
Yeah, I got to Jack from Bureau coming on Tuesday to take a look at it.
Just take a look as well.
But you say it's, we are going to have a problem. It's cracking in place. Zack and Vera tried it to erupt there the other day, and we're going to probably this winter because some of the seams aren't separating. As soon as you get pressure on there, the bubbles are, I mean, high, and you have bubbles that are sticking up off the roof.
So with snow and...
Soon as the pressure goes, it's got to do something.
Okay.
You know, something's got to get. So the choice would be to do another rolled roof or tear off and do a young rolled roofing. Albert Davis, the gentleman who's up there, I found to be very knowledgeable on that one, goes through and tear it off, but to leave that there and then actually apply it over the top of it.
Like a membrane?
A membrane, which would be a 20-year warranty versus the one I asked, we've got, which would be a 10-year warranty.
Sorry, so you're actually going to just cover over the existing? Is it EPDM?
It's not. If you cover with EPDM, they cover with sheet goods, three-quarter sheet goods, and then put a granular sheet down over the whole thing. Up there now, like I said, it's a rolled roofing, granular. It's 25 years old, and a majority of the stones have gone. I asked him about what will be patched, and Silver Cody goes, yeah, right next year. You know, so you...
I don't want to compromise the building.
You can band-aid it, but you're going to, you're going to spend good money on the bad, or bad money on the good. You know, at this point, before we have an issue, it would be smarter to have it taken care of.
So you said that this roof is about 20 years old?
Twenty-four.
This carbon flat roof is all we're talking about, right? 25 years old?
Yeah.
And I imagine that's probably close to the lifespan that's expected for these roofing materials? Is it? What is the lifespan that's expected for these roofing materials? I would imagine it's less than that.
The rolled roofing, you know, we've done 15 to 20. We've done very well. We get 25 years on a rolled roofing.
And so my concern here is that I know that we've got, the rest of the roof is copper, which is pretty distinctive and expensive.
That was repaired a number of years ago. Yeah, it's not about that.
So I'd just like to make sure that, you know, if Bureau is involved, could we have Bureau look at the quotes that we've gotten too and just make sure that, you know, we're going with a vendor that knows how to integrate with that type of roof and everything before we...
Albert Davis has been around since the 30s.
Yeah, 1936, I think, is when they said that they were, you know. Would you have anything to add, Nathan?
Yes, Bob. Name and address, please. Robert Corbin, Southern Washington Avenue. It's a modified bitumen roof. We repaired it. While I was mayor, we hired Bureau Architecture to do a condition report on a building, setting prioritaries for maintenance repairs, which we followed while I was mayor. Normally, a modified bitumen roof has a 35 to 40-year lifespan. It was still in good shape when I was still mayor. I haven't looked at it obviously since that time. I highly recommend you talk to Jeanne Sterling, because as a member of our preservation board, she was also a project architect for the project, who oversaw both phases of the project. There was an initial project, and then the contractor changed, and some of the work wasn't properly done, so we had to repair that. The critical issue here is the copper roof and the edge details, because copper, if you subject it to asphalt or certain other products that are used in the roofing industry, the acid will eat through the copper and compromise the roof. Based on current labor and materials, the replacement value of that total roof is going to be close to $200,000. So I would spend the time, I would hire Bureau Architecture to write specific specifications. That is, both the modified bitumen roof and the copper roof constitute archaic building materials. They really are the regional expert in that, and that will protect the long-term investment that was made 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, maybe you missed that part. We're already having Bureau coming out, the principals coming out. We'll get, so we're following up, so, yes. Appreciate your input.
I have the specifications, so you won't get them. I have to stay on the person.
Thanks so much. Thanks for your input. Appreciate that. Anything else for Steve? Okay. Thank you. Next up, hi Jeff. DPW report. Any other comments regarding the DPW report? Zach, questions? It's been busy. Yeah.
You guys don't have any questions?
You know what? Let's just talk about the streetlights really quickly, because that has just been so problematic, particularly down at the end of South Main, where it's been kind of in the dark for a long time. And now there's a few that are up and running, actually.
The one that was missing had now, they have a white house, but the widespread algae still exists.
Yeah.
That has not changed.
Yeah, it's like that one by you.
Few weeks ago, we met with representatives of our G and E, one person's a streetlight coordinator, and two others who are public and community outreach specialists.
Government relations.
Yeah, so we had asked them to put something together to submit to the public, to let them know what is going on with the streetlights, that they're being investigated and worked on, trying to reenergize some of those objects.
Yeah, they're deep diving, though, because it's a whole section. It's a whole run. Something else going on.
Ancient wiring, so they're just trying to diagnose where the fault is.
Could be a chipmunk. Yeah. But they're working on it, and, you know, it's their old lights, so we're trying, you know, different things put together. Okay. And then you all saw the report by Josh Galilei on, you know, the pruning of the oak and just kind of where we're at, you know.
And his recommendations moving forward with the tree as it exists, periodically inspecting it, and whatever is recommended.
Sort of making the assessments going forward, you know, so. Yes, Bob.
I mean, a street tree's going to be planted this fall because the urban forestry program, which I initiated as mayor, there's been a number of trees that have been taken out, and the absence and missing trees are now becoming visually prominent on our streetscape.
Yes, trees are going to be planted.
Trees so far as mayor, I just wondered if you knew our schedule. And my second follow-up question to that is the tree inventory that was maintained while I was mayor, has that been kept up to date?
Yeah, why don't you speak to that?
Yeah, there's a lot of detail that's kind of unorganized in that inventory, so we're going through and verifying everything in the field, according to the CHI/IS personnel in town, to put everything back correctly into the spreadsheet and update the maps. At that point, we will be reassessing all the areas that are missing trees, village roads, and whatever is left over that the state does not replace in the areas where trees have come down, to get a suitable tree for those areas.
And also, I know you want to speak about the paving, the contracts as well. Why don't we touch on that and talk through that?
One more tree question.
Oh, another tree.
You just mentioned that on village streets, we had a lot of them taken down on DOT, in DOT right-of-ways, and you just mentioned that they might be replacing some of those, but they are.
Yes.
So can you speak to that?
DOT took down 12 trees, actually two more just came down, I mean, Lucas down by Washington and the new Singapore. But they said that they're going to be replacing 15 trees on the state roads of the...
And they're replacing them with natives.
Yes, natives. They've given us a little bit of room for picking and choosing the lot.
Yeah, they just sent the list. Okay.
And areas that we had trees taken down due to our G and E coming through and trimming our power lines there and putting some back most places as well.
Yeah.
And what's the timeline on that? Are they coming this fall, or is it...
Yeah, so they actually just submitted a state out requests for planting of these trees, so within the next 10 days, there should be trees in the ground.
Yeah, and just to kind of, you know, bring everybody up to speed, they're absolutely crawling over this village. What did you say, 70?
Yeah, Cold Springs has 70 workers right now, and for a while, not only night work, mostly. But for about a week and a half, every corner has a worker, which is, you know, if they had this, they'd have kept going this past...
Yeah, would have been close to done, for sure. Yeah.
But as of now, it's going to carry through this spring, and I think they have a key should date of April 30.
Before the PGA.
Just before the PGA.
Yes. They're keenly aware of that. I know. I know. And I know for the night paving, the milling and paving, they put on two crews, not just one.
Yeah, they have a milling crew and paving crew coming from the north, working their way south. They started at Saint John Fisher. Now you can see they've come up into the village with just the south lane at this point. They might be working on the north side. And then another crew starting at 490, working west in the village, so 31. Pretty good, as you can see. You see, it's, you know, it's bigger, pulled down, and just way on the top.
Yeah, and then they have the rain today, too.
Yeah, they're still out there, still building, building in the rain, you just can't pave, so.
Yeah. Yes, Dave.
Hi, Dave Marshall, 67 South Main. Just a quick thank you, Zach, to the crew for helping out with Paula Sherwood's garden. Paula Sherwood's garden. The kids and I, Maria, could be quite finished. We tried to, we are out of time a little bit, but it looks real nice, and just wanted to say thanks for that.
And thanks for your help on that, but also, if you're going to be working on something like that, can you notify Village Hall? That's just as a...
I did.
You did, okay. I wasn't aware, so I was just...
He said we were good.
Okay, I just...
Yeah, so we're good.
Just so we know, yeah, we're working on our property. Okay, great. Well, that's wonderful, because we're going to be planting a lot of bulbs.
Sweet.
Hundreds, yeah.
Yeah, we're just a little short-staffed. We don't have a garden yet, so I'm trying to get out late most painted right now. Peter's been working on that for...
He has been chipping away.
Two and a half weeks or so, and he's got the south side of State Street, the east side of South Lane Street done, except for one pole, this is right in the middle construction area. And he's starting to work on the other side of South Lane Street now, so it shouldn't be too much longer until we have painted. I don't know if anyone's noticed.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, we plug way getting the median down in between, so we have the rose beds cleaned out to the most part, and a lot more green as well, than the median on Route 8th Street next to it. As soon as the construction's kind of out of the way, we can go on to Washington and never mind its park. Yeah.
Okay, so why don't you speak to, you know, the discussions that you've had with Spall at Village Grove and what we're looking at down there?
Yes, so the last meeting, I came to you guys with a proposal from Spall management who, they wanted to build, pay out a small section of grocery by, or roll those or shop, and so the builders. So he went and got free quotes, the lowest bid I brought to you guys, but I didn't have anything to compare it from the other end, so I got the contractor, who is the holder of the Monterey County contract or Discipleberg, and they came through, and that's Champion Asphalt Maintenance, and their quote was included in the pack. And Central Roadways, just, it's a lot less than...
That's amazing, the range.
So Jeff and I spoke earlier about having something official drawn up and having Spall sign off on it, that way, you know, I can be up on the books and he can at least pay us, you know. So I think the next step, if everybody's on board, you know, to pay, you know, 50% of the cost of the Center Roadways quote, and that's done, we'd either have something drawn up, pay Spall, sign off on it, and we'll report a opinion about it.
I think the trustees have to approve it first.
Yeah, and then contingent upon...
To an agreement, Spall, they had.
Yeah. And any other questions about the contracts?
So we need to approve that tonight? We have three now. Is that what...
Two quotes.
We have one last time, or is one of those?
There was another one, so essentially, we have five quotes.
Okay, we have five now.
We have five.
And the one that you're recommending is Central?
Central, it was the lowest, I'm sorry, four quotes. One of them is the contract, which we need to make up for. But this is, yeah, it's impressive. 50% of the costs of this will require...
Thank you. Okay, that's helpful. So I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract, subject to our attorney, and also Zach's input, working on the agreement for Spall, with Spall, to be signed off on.
With the Central Roadways?
Yes, Central, the contract with Central Roadways Incorporated.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Was that clear enough, Jeff?
Was that a clear enough motion?
Yeah, I mean, subject to the contract, does the board wish to see the agreement with Spall?
Yes.
To approve it?
I'd like to see it.
No, no, no. To approve is what I meant.
To approve what you did.
Well, yeah, I know you said they were trying to finish this up before the winter, and I know these asphalt companies are wrapping up work.
Depending on where they get the asphalt from, Penfield, I believe, is scheduled to close down the first week of December, so we do have a little...
A little bit of time.
But we don't want to wait till last minute, because if they already have jobs booked, we might be pushed out.
Subject to an agreement with Spall, that he paid 50% of the costs.
Yeah, actually, that...
And then I'll just...
And then you can...
I'll forward your copies.
Okay.
Once it's signed, and then I'll complete the file.
Okay, so as amended? Okay.
Okay. Roll call. Trustee Leiken.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Next.
I know that Spall's very eager to get this done.
Yeah, sure.
I'll get ahold of Sean Bill.
Okay.
Just find out who we set it up for. We can just leave it blank, as long as they indicate they're from Spall and have the authority to sign for Spall.
Anything else, Zach?
Yes, the quote from White Clock in Fairmont, I think I'll make a push of that.
Nothing wrong.
Sure, too. So the quotes for the repainting of the clock, one is to leave it in place and paint over the existing paint, and the other is to dismantle the clock, take it down, take it to a shop, have it sand blasted, repainted, so it's fresh, new-looking, replace the lenses, do some maintenance work on the signage around the top of the clock, make sure everything's fixed the way it's supposed to, and set it back into place with clear coat on it, so...
Yes, like a UV protector.
Yeah, UV protecting, so I'm not sure how long the first coat of paint lasts on that, but it should protect it very well.
And I also want to add, Bud and Peggy Frame donated the clock, and Peggy passed a while ago, and Bud passed last month, so his children, one of his sons has been in touch with me, and they're interested in maybe helping us or, you know, maybe paying half of it or going in on this with us, just in honor of their parents and, you know, what they donated, which I think is nice. So I'm going to be meeting with him on Tuesday, maybe sort of slip through some things. I think they are interested, just based on the phone call, really in a nice restoration of the clock, and, you know, that it's time to kind of...
To show a piece for the...
Yeah, so it's a high profile.
You know, it gets caused out all the time, it's like most of the office, especially that's going to start getting caused. To polish it up, especially with PG coming through, and sharing a lot of the stuff that we put on, like, great.
We'll fluff and poof. Also, can you speak, you know, because about the electrical issue that happened with the clock?
Yeah, this has been the one thing for the last few years. I think back in 2018, I had to have a company come through and start replacing a lot of the connections under the ground, because the lights, the banks of the lights were emitting and going out in the instance of the failure of the connectors. This time, we're having issues with the clocks being powered up because of the breaker box that's set, and the handle is meant for, you know, basement, it's not really meant for...
So it's eroding?
Yeah, the contacts are eroding, eroding, and the wires are falling apart. So as part of the DOT's project, this handle is right in the center of the curb ramp at the bump out in front of Pontillo's. And in order for that to be compliant, the box, the handle itself, would have to be cut down and the lid reset, so there's already some work that has to be done there, which they have to pull that breaker box off to do this work as part of DOT's project. But while they're in there, the electrician for Cold Springs said that they can go and get a more weatherproof, more suitable breaker box to be able to mount back in there, make all these new connections to it, because the breaker is obviously failing at this point. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the power's off to the clock right now. It's tripped three times in the last two days, so can't keep it going. So while it's apart, repairing it, replacing with better parts, putting it back together.
Seems like the time to do it. I haven't been...
Yes, so outside of the manipulation of the handle, the new box and new connections will be made and declassified. Not sure what their cost looks like yet, maybe a couple hours of work.
So they would supply the box and do the work at the builders' back?
Yep.
Okay, so you'll keep us posted on that?
Yeah.
Is that something that's going to happen by the end of this year?
Uh, hopefully.
Them finishing up this work for the autumn, or is it something in the spring when they come back to do the lights and whatnot?
Yeah, I don't think so, because I think they want to get that sorted out before wintertime, so they're going to have to that box down, which means they're going to have to disconnect that breaker box. And I'll verify all that stuff with the contractor and the engineer to make sure that it works, because if it's going to be off, then they can replace the box sooner, the breaker box sooner. So hopefully.
You know, I was thinking about these contracts, as I said, I'm meeting with Bud and what I can do is just, you know, let the board know the outcome of the meeting, not Bud, I'm sorry, his son Scott. So what's the timeframe for this? I mean, if we, if I can bring it back to the board for the next meeting?
Yeah, they said that...
I just want to make sure we're within our parameters.
Work should only take about a month or so. This man, you know, taking it off the, as I said, you know, bringing it back to the shop, stripping it down, repainting it, that's about, so it should be...
Okay. Okay, so in other words, if we make the decision on the contracts, our next meeting is still okay?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we're within the timeframe. Anything else, Zach?
Yeah, I don't know.
Got a lot going.
I know, I'm sorry. I thought the longest part of this would be too many. Our auction items that we sold are all good.
Great.
That's what we got, a lot of the stuff is, big 1962 diaphragm pump, trash pump, had been sitting around, it's still fired right up, but...
That's wild.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff is just that kind of stuff. And then, and old salt in there, maybe, this generator that's sat on the trailer, the 62 generator. And, yeah, so that's what we got for sale of that stuff.
That's great, and it cleaned up the yard and, you know, all good.
Made some room.
Sure. Excellent.
That's all we got.
That's it? Great, thank you. Okay, so the treasurer's report? We got the bill pay and...
Questions?
Any questions?
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, folks.
Make a motion to approve vouchers.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Leiken.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Okay. Anything else, Brooklyn?
Um, just a little update, I will, while she's not here, speak highly of her idea because we have kind of come together and made it on the process to where I created an Excel spreadsheet to kind of eat streamlined, enter our information, she tweaked one a little bit and kind of came together, and now since she's been away, she left me some notes and things, and we pretty much gathered July and August already, uh, we just got in the, um, statements for September, but what we have in that spreadsheet now, I can just take in all the info that I constantly handle all throughout the week, and now we'll put it into, right into the Excel sheet, so we can't put it into the system until this time, but now we do have Excel sheets to where that info is just right there, so we streamline it right into the.
That's right, so you're capturing it.
Yeah, capturing it right now, weekly, compared to gathering monthly, so.
Yeah.
Three of the right ones.
Wow, that's wonderful, yeah. You guys have really been slugging away there. Anything else? Okay, village clerk report? Anything, Krista?
No.
She's been holding the fort, I know. And thank you for holding the fort.
I, I also wanted to say thanks a lot, Krista. I, I know, uh, our, um, clerk is, is out right now, but you've been doing a great job of communicating and, and posting the different packet versions online and everything, and it was very helpful, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Yeah, well done, okay. Uh, let's see, so, uh, first, first up then, uh, the open meetings law, uh, actually the resolution. We got that.
I, I, I don't want to lead off if someone else is going to see first, but, um, I had a couple of questions, uh, and maybe Jeff can answer. Um, I don't believe the intent of the state allowing municipalities to, um, some flexibility with this open meetings law is that, um, anyone would be fully remote all the time, and I don't think that's what the intent of, um, this template that we use either, um, and the language of the current draft, there's still a little room for interpretation. I have, um, let's see, that's set forth in the public bodies adopt, oh, wait, that's us, which include disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other.
That is the whereas, which one is it? Oh, shoot, I should have written that down as a screenshot.
So it's in the resolution?
It's in the resolution, um, and it's the same, I was on NICOM's, uh, guidance, just.
It's a little different than this resolution.
Yeah, right, right. Ours does have the disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event, which excludes the members who attended.
Right.
So it's the or any other significant unexpected factor event, that to me leaves a lot of room for interpretation.
Right.
So I didn't know how much wiggle room we have, um, to, to make that more restrictive or to, to clarify it a little bit, um.
I think we have the wiggle room we want.
You think that's, well, I guess that's not a question for me.
Well, would it be, would it make sense to have, you know, maybe direct Jeff to take a look at that and maybe look at it, any additional language, you know, give us some thoughts on that?
Because given this.
Also, the tableist to the next meeting, if others are here, you know?
We're missing two people.
Because we're missing two people as well.
Yeah.
And this is.
And I wasn't here, I don't know how deep, I did watch the meeting, but I can't remember how deep you all got into this last time, um, discussing it, so I apologize if I'm, I'm making you reiterate things, um, that, that you discussed.
I don't, you're going to really get into it too much that I recall.
Because I think that's, those are what the concerns that I've been hearing from, I've had a lot of people contact me, and, you know, the concerns are that someone would, um, be able to not ever come in person.
Yeah, I don't think that's the intention, but I know you don't, you want to make sure that it's reflecting that, um, yeah.
If I may, so I mean, we've got, just to address the, the current, um, people at the table here, I mean, we're missing two members of the board tonight, right?
Yeah.
We usually have a five-member board, we need three to operate, um, so trustee Lamb here did communicate with me and said that she was ill. Do we know where trustee Keating is this evening?
He has a board meeting conflict, I believe.
So it seems like he's had a conflict at pretty much every meeting since June, and I don't, I think he's only been to part of one meeting in person since that time, and otherwise he's been, uh, remote or hasn't attended the, the whole meeting or both. So if we're asking our attorney to address, um, you know, the, the clauses where, um, we're able to be remote, I don't even know where to start because I don't, we're missing one of our members, so is that acceptable?
So why don't, why don't we do this, and why, and why don't we, you know, move this to when we have the board, you know, I think that's probably real, I think you're making good points and it's realistic to, we should have.
So do we want to hold on having Jeff investigate?
Can we just have Jeff at least investigate some additional language and then bring it back when we have the board?
Let me look at, I don't have a copy of the actual law, I apologize for that.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, I, at least the law's in there.
I, I guess personally, before having, uh, you know, spending money to have our attorney draft slang, I'd like to understand what the issues are, you know, why can't we get a, a member of our, our board in person?
I think those are two separate things, well, to me, these are two separate things, and I don't, I don't know what was discussed at the last meeting, but to me, this is something that we didn't have before, um, that now the state is allowing us, each municipality, to decide if we want the flexibility when people are sick, when they're caring for people, when they're, you know, do, doing something else, um, that takes them away from, from being able to come to village hall. Um, do we want our board members, um, our, you know, this board, but also then our volunteer boards to be able to, um, join via video conferencing? Um, and that's, to me, that's separate than whatever's happening, um, with this board right now, because I think this is a, a law that we didn't have before, and now we, we can have a, some flexibility, and to me, that's a very human thing to do, um, when you do, I agree, we need to all be here in person when we can be, but there are extenuating circumstances. When I was on the planning board, I had to go help my mom, um, with surgery, I was working remotely, I couldn't call in, um, you know, it would have been beneficial for, for that board to have more people around the table and for me to stay in the loop, so that's a discussion, um, I'd like to have about the benefits of that. And if we need to hold off, I'm totally fine with that, but to me, I see those as two separate issues.
You know, I, I'd just like to add that, um, the discussion that came out of NICOM about this and, um, was that, frankly, with COVID, um, I think that sort of really was the genesis of a lot of this for so many municipalities who really made the investment into, uh, technology, and we're also really looking at upgrading our technology here for our meetings as well, and I think we really should. Um, so these investments have been made by a number of municipalities, and I think really the recognition was that, you know, the municipalities are set up for this, it, it actually, um, enables board members to participate. Say, for example, if they're, they test positive for COVID, but they don't have any symptoms, but they really can't come in, they still would want to participate in the meeting, at least through video conferencing, and I think this, the, this model law and, and now the resolution as well, really came out of that, and really the recognition that we're, we're kind of doing things differently, and this really just widens really the opportunities for board members to participate. That was the part of the discussion that, at least that I was hearing as well, and I know a number of other municipalities already in the county are looking at this. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't, didn't the HPV already pass their resolution to enable this? So we've already had one of our volunteer boards, um, enable this, who are their board members as well. So I, I agree with Renee, I mean, I think, you know, I, I understand, you know, you're trying to address it, another issue as well, but I think this is sort of separate from that, you know, this is something that I do think we really should look at, you know, because we also have been talking about for a while, upgrading our technology here, and that's part and parcel.
We have a deadline on this, or like, we could, if we don't do anything, it's just, we can't have video conferencing.
Yeah, there's no.
There's no.
It's not, right, right.
Okay, there's no.
I mean, my, my thought would be, we, the only I've done is forward to you, propose a resolution which could be turned into a local law, and, um, the, uh, procedures suggested by the Committee on Open Government, I've not really looked at the actual law that enables this to decide or be able to advise you whether or not, how, how far you can vary from this stuff, okay, and that might be a good thing to know for your discussions.
Yeah, I do, um, I, I appreciate that. I guess, um, other than that one specific concern, uh, I do have several other concerns about remote meetings for our board. I, I am on remote meetings every day, I run a company remotely, um, and I'm not against remote meetings in general, but, um, that's when everybody is kind of aligned and, and there's a lot of trust and cohesion in the organization. I don't know if that's right for us right now, um, I think there's a, a certain benefit to, to being in person, um, but there, there are other issues we can go into later. I guess I'm wondering if, I think we've gotten some input from the public, we might have more input, uh, from the people here, I'm wondering if we just want to open that up and get that on the record.
Well, I, I'm thinking that we should actually have the, the whole board here to hear the comments from the public, and let's just move it.
Just say, just, we don't do anything until the next meeting, we don't even have Jeff.
And then we can hear, everybody can hear it, you know, I think that's.
Well, would we, so we would roll the, I know we've gotten some public comments, we would roll those to the next meeting, maybe we can put those in the packet so that people can see them, does that make sense? Um, I mean, since we've got a, we have received some input, I, I don't know, would the best way is to share this so we can broaden the conversation?
Sure, yeah.
I'm not against hearing comments either, if you want to do it now too.
Well, I mean, I think we've all agreed that we, you know, we, we're going to move it forward, you know, we have other items on the agenda, I just assume that the whole, we don't have Lily here, we don't have Dan here, I'd like to have the full board hear comments as well.
I, I think.
And you made a good point in the beginning, saying we're missing two members, and I think, you know, putting it on the next agenda or whatever.
And there's no hurry, I'm here, there's no deadline.
I, I just think it's a practical matter, that, that makes sense, then everybody can weigh in.
Right now, you cannot do it.
That's correct.
Well, because we would have to send it to, uh, a public hearing at the very least, right, to, or is there another?
You have to pass a local law.
Yeah, yeah, there's. Okay, so, so let's see.
It's not a real thing right now, but certainly it's up for discussion, and, I, you know, as to the public comments that we've received, they're already in the record, anyway, whether or once they're posted on the agenda, it's up to the board.
Yeah, you, I'm sorry, you're going to make a motion?
I was going to say we can tape, I'll make a motion and table it, would we have to have a motion for that or not really?
I, I would like to, if, if there are comments from, uh, the public, either online or in the room, I'd, I'd like to hear those since we're all together and on the topic right now.
Sure, sure, let's do it.
Since it was on the agenda, people came to.
Yeah, everybody came, sure. So any comments from the public?
Hi, Dave Marshall again, six seven south Maine. I just have two quick, uh, questions. One, were you tabling it to the extent such that Jeff was doing no work until the next conversation, or are tabling it to the intent for Jeff to be worked prior to the next conversation?
I don't think we got that far.
I think we were just tabling.
Okay, okay, and then the second one is just.
If I could provide my answer to what thing I think might have happened, I think, I think for this board, we have an intelligent conversation about this. They ought to know the parameters of where they could go in that court.
Okay.
The restrictive we could get in detail.
And you brought that up earlier, so.
So one of the questions, and this is, this comes from the resolution, it says, and Renee, you've read it, um, that they could choose not to be disciplined present at any such meeting locations due to extraordinary circumstance, and then it goes on and gives some examples, light, disability, illness, and care, interestingly, if you look up what extraordinary circumstances that means, and how you could, um, interpret that, in fact, examples online of how to interpret extraordinary circumstances would be something as simple as a, um, special meeting of the board, to suggest it doesn't have to be related to disability, illness, caregiving, or otherwise, just the simple fact that an extraordinary circumstance is a special meeting called by the board would permit remote attendance based on how the law is crafted. So one of the things you could consider is limitations on the frequency of use, and then fall back on some standard, which is our unplace, where you have to have, you know, forum in public, so for example, somebody could maybe use this one, two times a year rather than anything more than that, and that speaks to Jeff and the work that you might do in terms of how to limit it.
What the scope would be, yeah.
Yeah, to be clear, because I guess that goes a clearer, I would not be doing any specific things one way or the other, I would just, my thought is to compare what the, what the actual legislation allows, and then advise the board as to where, for instance, your parameter that you've just suggested could be, could it be included or not?
And also part of, and part of this resolution is that there has to be a quorum of three.
Still present.
Yeah.
And as a member of the public, to, to express my opinion, I do think that there is considerable value to seeing your representatives in front of you on a regular basis, how they interact, how they conduct business with the public, and when online, the ability to have the periphery be whoever it may be, the ability to go on, you, off, you, have conversations, I know you have to be physically there, but you can be on your, and everything can be going on around you while you're there. It's not quite the same as five people in the room talking to open government in open meetings as expected as a constituent.
Yep.
Just to be clear, the three-person quorum is that three people are available at any location to the public.
Okay.
So you each could all be in your homes, provided the public can come into your homes.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it is, you know, then the meeting can function.
Wow, so I wonder if we have wiggle room there too, to, to write where the quorum, some details about that, or?
You got to be careful, you know, because the, because the state has really preempted this area of the law, and that's one of my concerns, is how, how much can you change this thing?
Could you require a quorum to be in one location?
You know, that's.
That's, that's, I think where he's going, you know, how do we?
We don't know.
My guess is that, given that they've preempted how public meetings must happen, to mess around with those kind of provisions, probably wouldn't pass much.
It's either up or down kind of.
Yes.
That's right. Professor Corby, Southern Washington Avenue, um, I'm actually opposed to this provision. I think it's, it represents a giant step backwards for village government. Um, the New York State Office for Open Meetings has been in place for decades, and it was put in place because of problems in local and state government with collusion, uh, side conversations, decisions being made outside the legal meeting process. Uh, the standards that have been in place for decades have been put there for a good reason, and they've worked well. Um, in the twenty-eight years while I was on the board, we always worked around those standards. There were meetings where I was remote, and they were critical meetings that happened because of seventy-five Monroe, where I, I called in and gave information, but was unable to participate in the voters' deliberation. I think the previous standard of having, when someone does have to call remotely, um, have them in a public place, that protects the public's assurance that there isn't a special interest or a side conversation happening that the public cannot witness. The value of village government is our access to you. It's somewhat different from the preservation board and the planning board, which are reviewing technical issues. You really here are representing us, and our right to have access to the full extent of the conversations and deliberation occurs is, is the underlying great value of village government, so I ask you to consider that carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your input. Um, the resolution that is, is before us in our packet, that was provided to us by, who wrote that? What was the entity?
Committee on.
So it was the Committee on Open Government that actually wrote the resolution, okay, that's helpful too. Um, any other comments? Can we move on here? So you were starting to make a motion, we listened to some comments, um.
I think at this point, you would continue until next.
Just continue it, I guess.
To make it on the agenda, I hope, next time.
And do we want to give, do we want to give Jeff any direction in terms of looking at the parameters of?
I mean, one of the questions that Dave raised is, can you mess around with it to the extent that all three of you have to be in one place?
I mean, I'd like you to take a look at that, I mean, I think those are, those are important considerations if, if this is being looked at.
Personally, I, with, with the concerns on this specific board and with the concerns that we've heard from constituents and my own concerns about transparency and about, um, you know, making us, uh, making some or all of us virtual, um, you know, we, we are the people that our constituents elected, not the person that we're having a conversation with Slack on, not the person who's sitting next to us in, in our room who's off camera. Um, you know, I, I think that, uh, there may be legal issues that we need to work out, um, but there could be case law too, you know, this is a relatively new area of law, and we could be doing this research, and then six months from now, there's a new case related to open meetings law, and, and the situation changes. I feel like we can take advantage of the, of being in public, um, and this is not an urgent situation to address, and I would just defer it, uh, for at least six months or so, and, and then bring it up again, rather than spending money and, and having a landscape change when we're halfway through.
I, I appreciate that input. I think, um, you know, we are looking at, and we've been talking, as, as you all know, um, about upgrading the technology in this meeting room, and that would include, you know, having the smart screens, so any, um, if there were a trustee that had, you know, significant circumstances where they couldn't be here in person. they couldn't be here in person, they actually would visually be here on the screen, and so we would not only hear their voice, we would be able to see them and interact with them, which is quite different from what we have been sort of, you know, duct taped and super glued here with our meetings, you know, going through COVID. So again, I think, I think we should table it for now till maybe the next meeting gets more information, and I'd like to move forward, at least with, looking at it, because I think Renee made a good point. The issues maybe that have been raised regarding, you know, trustees' attendance or not, I think this is actually separate. This is really a consideration that actually municipalities across the entire state are looking at. You know, this isn't just a one of for us, so I'd just like to bear that in mind as we move forward.
There's no, we heard from Jeff, there's no urgency.
Yeah.
So I'm fine waiting, and if we could not have Jeff do anything, I'm fine with that too, because it's not a grievance on that anyway.
Yeah, well, we can wait till we have a full board. Maybe we'll just do that. Okay, great. Good with that?
All right.
We have the full board, okay. Next up, special permit application for Shane Place. Anybody here?
I think just as for a public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody wanted, you know, was going to say anything about it. Okay, so this is, this is for the salon. Darling Aesthetics. Yeah, this, this really, I would entertain a motion then to move this to public hearing unless somebody has additional questions regarding the application.
I'll make a motion to move the four Shane Place application to a public hearing. Do we have a date?
Chris, instead of come up with a date?
November 10.
November 10.
She's on it. Okay, public hearing in November 10, the time, 7:00.
7:00, are we always at 7:00 PM?
Pretty much.
I should know that by now. Okay, 7:00 PM.
For whatever you want.
Okay.
Well, then we kind of make it 7:00.
Okay, 7:00 PM.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, the non-municipal permit application amendment. This is for Candlelight Night. I think, I think it's just they wanted to add a band down at Northfield Common.
Yeah, the one I had in front of Northfield Music.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it'll be facing down towards Pittsburgh Boulevard, not back towards residents.
I've got just a small piece of information on that too. I was on the, the meeting with the Chamber of Commerce this morning as the liaison to the chamber, and they said that they will not be doing fireworks as they have in previous years because I guess that disturbed the animals that are involved. So this has kind of been a substitution of the fireworks. There's, there's something that'll be done with the band, is what they're thinking.
And it'll be done by 8:00 o'clock, way, way before the noise, you know, timeframe.
Yeah, I heard about the fireworks, I know, I did read about it. Take care, Dave. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended application.
We need to.
Is it within, are we 45 days away from that?
It's 12:06, it's listed.
December 6. Yeah.
We're good.
We're good.
Close to the day you'd like to think.
I know, it's gonna be, it's gonna happen before you know it, right?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're gonna hear the band. Okay, next up, we have some public hearings this evening, evening, excuse me. The first one up is a short-term retail permit for 44 North Main Street. Does the board have any questions about this?
Nothing has changed for us.
Yeah, it's pretty much.
Same thing that he's been doing for a long time.
I know. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye. And for the record, this is a short-term retail permit to sell the Christmas trees at the dairy, which is a tradition in the village. Is there anyone wishing to speak? I'm hearing crickets. Okay, to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second, I mean.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'll entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a short-term retail business permit as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Are all the conditions in the application, or should we say same conditions as last year?
With, I believe all the conditions are in here, but.
They are.
This is to approve the short-term retail business application as it has been done in previous years.
Or as presented, no?
And as presented.
There we go, we're calling, we're going to suspenders at this point, I think.
Okay, trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up is a special permit at 5 South Main Street. This is for a restaurant, for anybody. Hi, come on up. We have a chair right here, we have a chair right here. We're good. Was that your desk? I didn't even know.
No, no, I'm joking.
Who knew? Okay, you now have a chair.
And they stick them on their tables for this.
I know, thank you for. How are you?
I'm all right.
Good, good, and your name?
My name is Haywa Shree.
Nice to meet you. Okay, so tell us.
We're trying to open a restaurant in fact, something, it used to be a restaurant, but we are just changing that name and doing different food, so we hoping to serve the physical community.
Okay, and same, just, we've all had a chance, you know, to look at the permit, I didn't know if the board had any questions for you. It's pretty much the same thing, really?
Yeah, yeah.
As before.
Same function, just different venue.
Exactly.
Gotcha. Okay, and, I mean, I don't have any questions, Renee, does she have anything?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Pretty straightforward, yep, so I can entertain a motion from somebody.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit application as presented.
Do we have to open up?
You forgot to.
Oh, I forgot to open. See, I was so excited, I'm hungry.
If no one seconds your motion, it just dies, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Good one.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak?
Anybody online?
Just, okay, nothing?
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, there's another motion that we could have.
Okay, now I'll make a motion to approve the special permit as presented in the packet.
Aye.
So include the conditions from the previous special permit for this property. Steve, are they running it essentially the same?
I couldn't quite hear you.
Should we, should we include in that motion the conditions imposed for the previous special permit?
I mean, if you want to state it that way, because I don't think the application was all that.
Okay.
Right, in, in terms of seating and those, those types of things, right? That's not changing.
Conditions from previous permits.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, as amended.
I'll second.
Roll call, trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, thank you, good luck to you.
Thank you, I'm awesome.
When are you, is this an opening?
We will try to open in November 1st, maybe.
Great, oh, good, so you'll be open for Candlelight Night too.
Yes.
Oh, you'll get a lot of business.
Thank you.
Wonderful, all the best to you.
Thank you.
Guys, have a wonderful day.
You too. Okay, next up, and this is just really more just the Budget Committee that we just, we talked about last time, so it's you and Dorothea and Zach and me, and so Dorothea's going to be back from vacation, I think Monday, hopefully well rested. So what we'll do, I think she'll start to set updates, you know, let's just pull the room here and start to, you know, really drill down and get some good planning going here. Okay, so this is really just an update for everybody. So next up, LWRP code update.
I can kick this off or can anybody else?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Shall I go ahead? So thank you to our attorney for providing a couple of different options to clean up the LWRP code. And basically, the idea of this cleanup is primarily to ensure that the jurisdiction for LWRP review remains in front of a single board, which is the Planning Board that has traditionally had the capacity to review applications pursuant to the LWRP policies that we have in place. And so there are also a couple of changes, I noticed, Jeff, related to public hearing, I think, was that the other cleanup item in here that there was?
That was not my suggestion.
Okay, maybe I confused, so let me, so the, the couple of different options, if I might, Jeff, in this, this code here. There, there were a couple of options, and this is related to chapter 121 of our code. There was an option in, let's see, sections D and E.
Oh, D?
Yeah, where our attorney made a couple of different proposals there, and one of them put the review authority or gave the ability or the necessity of the Historic Preservation Board to make a recommendation. Jeff, I wondered if you wanted to speak to that, since that wasn't.
Yeah, it seemed to me that, seems to me that the HPB has expertise in areas that the Planning Board might not, and that some of the LWRP standards really speak to those areas where the HPB has more or better authority, not authority, better, better knowledge and experience. And that would only be a, a response, sort of an advice and recommendation sort of thing, not a binding. It would be, it would be like their, like the authority that the HPB has anyway.
Their bias.
Right.
So they, they, they actually can do that without invitation.
I guess that's what I was thinking, I, I don't have too strong of an opinion about either way of fixing this, it seems like all the different options fix the main problem that we, that we have with the code right now. I guess what I was thinking is that, since the Historic Preservation Board does already have the ability to provide a recommendation, to me, I was a little bit worried that if we tell them that any additional required information is submitted, I wondered if that left us open to somebody saying, well, they didn't submit any input by the timeline and challenging a determination on that basis, so if it essentially added some complexity.
Adding a requirement, whereas right now it's a.
It's always an option.
Yeah, it's an option.
So I.
Probably a question for Jeff, I don't know. Well. Because we don't have it laid out as a.
You could always ask him to get that, you know, the timeframe that fits. 60 days would, under, under the alternative in E, the consistency determiner, the timeframe requirement doesn't start running until the HPB gets back to planning.
Oh, that's an E.
Yeah. So I guess with, with that, I would just go the simpler path, I guess, right now. I think that, you know, to me, it's really just, all these things might fix the problem, but I would prefer a kind of simpler approach that, you know, leaves the, the current ability for the HPB to advise in its current role and just do the minimal thing that will get the code approved.
If you don't specifically call it out, like the first option, it would work the same as it's currently working, it's an option to.
Except the HPB may not really know what's going on.
I was going to say, this is, to me, more transparent.
I mean, I don't, I mean, this is entirely the board's call.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, I was really thinking more of the issue, the HPB doesn't know what's going on, it's not such a high profile.
Right, which is most of the time, it's not usually those high profile, yeah.
But again, this is totally up to the board.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see something, I think it'd be great to see something like where there's a, and it wouldn't be our place to tell them to do this, but the Planning Board could say, well, we always notice the HPB whenever we've got an LWRP review, you know, and they would weigh in.
Well, you could do that in this statute.
In, in the statute, yeah, I guess that would be.
Requirement to notify.
Yeah, make it part of the procedure.
But then if it doesn't.
Yeah, you run into the same, you run into the same timeframe role. I mean, I guess that they know, if they get a completed application, and they get notice of the complete application, and they're not back to the Planning Board within 60 days, it's on them anyway. Right, get notice, Planning Board's going to make a decision or have a public hearing in 60 days, HPB doesn't get back to them until they get back.
Yeah, they may or may not respond, actually.
So that's with the HPB clause in there, you're saying, there would be the notice, and then they just don't respond, and then that's a.
That's on them.
Yeah.
They must have voted after, after being notified.
Or they've chosen not to respond, like they don't feel the need to weigh in.
Courtesy would say we have noticed, you know, send back and say they won't respond.
I'm, I'm okay with that too, as long as you're assuring us that there's nothing, you know, if they don't respond, then it wouldn't overturn the decision.
But I think that's, well, you can, the language can structure it, that they have the opportunity within the timeframe to respond or not. I mean, that's pretty common. Yeah.
What you wanted to say.
Yeah.
Well, what I would like to do is solve the immediate issue in front of us in the simplest way possible and move this forward. So I guess if we're talking about needing to change the COVID even further, I.
You gotta make a choice anyway, because it's all drafted in the alternative.
So we can't move anything to public hearing, even though we've got this drafted in the?
Well, you know, we have a, the code workshop coming up November 4th, so why don't we, you know, I mean, that's just in a few weeks, and we can address, address things then.
To answer the question, though, you could say, well, with, we're moving to public hearing with the first alternative for blah, 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 we're moving to public hearing with the, with the second alternative in E.
Sort of move to column A.
If you wanted to move it to public hearing, there would be a way to do that.
Is there any advantage to doing this separately when we're, like, if we're having the code workshop on the 4th, and we already make some decisions around this, wouldn't we want to just have the hearing all at once? Because this will put them on two separate dates then, correct? So then we'll have one minor code update this one, and then we're going to have another batch of whatever we're doing on November 4th, and they'll be separately, and they're going to probably be filed together anyway. So I, I'm totally fine with making some decisions tonight, I just wonder if it makes more sense to have the hearing on everything at, at once, but I, I will hand it back to you to answer that.
Well, let's, let's try to just push a little bit further about the, the options, the two options in front, in front of us.
Okay.
Are we, in, in terms of the HPB mandatory referral or not, are there strong opinions on, on that? I mean, I guess, I don't, I would tend to go simpler and just, and not add additional requirements to the code, since I feel like the, the boards are independent and, you know, there's already a public hearing for the LWRP, so.
Yeah. I would, I would guess, I would want to hear from the, do we know what the Historic Preservation Board, would they want a mandatory notification?
I mean, I think that's also part of what the workshop could bring out, you know, that we could have this additional dis. that we could have this additional discussion, and, you know, have HPP weigh in and other Boards, members of the public, the other two Board members, you know, to kind of drill down on that a little bit.
Is there, I'm just curious, so there's nothing in our code or other laws that would require a notice to our other Boards anyway if we're passing, you know, if we're doing something impactful in the LWRP overlay district?
I don't think so.
Yeah. It seems like there should be...
Always get a courtesy.
I know.
This is the only, this is the direct document. LWRP itself is sort of a mission statement, I guess you would say. It's more like a content plan than legislation. So if it's not in here, it's my own.
Yeah.
I do have a public question comment.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's Peggy Carabris, 81 South Main. Would you please clarify when in the application process the LWRP review should take place? Before final site plan approval, before review by the HPP? That's a question.
It takes place before any other approvals can happen. There has to be an LWRP consistencies rule.
And that was the process, the most recent process. Yeah.
So in doing this, we're adding another requirement for the, for whoever's assisting the Planning Board and for the Planning Board Chair. I don't know if that's a downside or not. I mean, I think it's a good idea to always notify the other Boards when something like this is happening, whether, I don't know what the downside is to having it codified like this.
It's interesting, just because it hasn't sort of been codified or, you know, put down somewhere, doesn't mean that it shouldn't or that we shouldn't really look at it. You know, this, again, I think is an opportunity, you know, you brought this up, you know, it's a good thing to look at, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't have strong feelings. I would probably want to know whether the Plan or the Historic Preservation Board would want it in the code that's laid out like that. Because then, does that leave it open to if you, if somewhere in the process that doesn't happen or somehow it gets lost in the process?
Or if they aren't notified?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Do we want the Planning Board's determination possibly contingent on notice of the other Boards? Right?
Maybe it's not a big deal.
Well, LWRP is a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So not a lot of them occur. We don't do a lot of...
Yeah. I don't work with that Board, so I don't know how many it is. But it's a big deal. It's a big deal. So from that perspective, getting it right.
Yeah.
Is important. It's important.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting that giving the HPP notice is getting it right. I'm saying that following the procedure, the LWRP, whatever that is, getting that right is important.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I agree with that, too. Well, then, perhaps what we can do is this, we actually ask both Boards, because we're also, you know, conditioning the...
Right, we're putting more work on for the...
Yeah. So I would just ask if possibly our deputy clerk could just ask both Boards for their thoughts on that, if they want to be notified of LWRP review.
And let them know also of the workshop on November 4th, too.
It's November 3rd.
3rd.
November 3rd.